I'd like to call the meeting to order. We can have a moment of silence. Max, will you?
I am President of the United States of America and the Attorney for the Department of Public Affairs. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice that this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick and West Milford TV 77, and posted at the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Sutovich, Mrs. Jurgensen, Mrs. Rokano, Mrs. Dwyer.
Here.
Mrs. Lockwood.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Mrs. Markbar, Mr. Lippie.
Here.
Mrs. Robeyo.
Here.
Dr. Fenari, the interim superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lockwood. This evening, Mr. Schultz will be presenting the preliminary budget. Just for those of you who may not have been following what's been going on in the state of New Jersey, there have been some changes to opportunities for school districts with state funding. And Mr. Schultz's presentation is going to explain all of that and share information for the board's consideration in utilization of some of that opportunity for additional funding. Mr. Schultz?
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight for the revised budget presentation. The budget season usually ends at the conclusion of April when we do our public budget hearing. But as Dr. Fenari mentioned, there's some... Does it sound good to me?
No, it doesn't sound good.
All right, that should be better. Yes. Okay, so the state set some legislation issues.
They opened up the budget?
I'll say it again. On May 14th, there's two new bills signed into law. PL 2024 C12 extends the deadlines for the 2024 budget procedures for some certain districts, not all districts. They authorize submission of a new budget no later than July 5th to the county office. And PL 2024 C13 provides stabilized school budget aid grants for 2425 to also eligible school districts equal to 45% of the amount of the CDA reduction they face for this upcoming school year and allows certain districts like us the ability to increase their 2425 tax levy by a certain amount. It's a different amount for every district. For non-SCA districts, the tax levy can be increased by the district's reduction in CDA compared to 2425 school year compared to the 2021 school year. 2425 cap adjustment is limited to a levy increase of 9.9% over what the levy was for the current 2324 school year. How to see tax our district is we are eligible for both of these adjustments. Our equalization aid for this upcoming school year was initially reduced by 81,537 in 2425. The stabilized school budget aid grant overplains 45% of that, storing $36,692 in state aid for the district's use for 2425 school year. The district's net reduction in state school aid in 2425 compared to the 2021 school year, which is the baseline, is $5,782,990. District received $11,272,970 back in 2021 in state aid. Oh, $1 million, I'm sorry. $11,272,970 compared to our anticipated amount for next year of $5,489,980. Our total reduction to those two numbers is $5,782,990. But the maximum allowable adjustment that we have is the 9.9% that I alluded to earlier. So it's capped at $4,237,007. That represents a 9.9% increase in tax levy compared to this school year I'm about to wrap up. Just for comparison sake, for comparison, S2 has been implemented. Our state aid has been reduced by $9,121,140. In 2017, '18, our state aid received a total of $14,61120 versus next year's amount, which I mentioned, is $5,489,90. Cumulatively, if they allow state at the $14 million number from 2018, '19 through next year, that would result in $36,878,530 more of state aid that were available to the district's use if we hadn't made a cut through the S2 cuts. The tax levy adjustment is a one-time adjustment to raise the base for the tax base for West Milford and will not follow the bank cap if it's not used in 2425. If the adjustment is not used now, it won't be available for future use. So this is the state's way to provide a one-time opportunity for S2 to impact the districts to add to their tax base, to offset some of the state aid funding increases. The state aid funding formula moving forward is currently unknown. This is the first year that they fully funded the formula. But now that S2 has been implemented, nobody knows what the formula will look like moving forward. So the S2, they took the state aid realignment into other districts and now give it a chance to let these districts do an adjustment. But unfortunately, it's on the backs of taxpayers to make the adjustment. The maximum allowable adjustment, which I mentioned earlier, equals $4,237,007. The district can use any amount up to that amount, that's the maximum. So anything from zero to that amount can be utilized. Districts with the new cap adjustments are requesting use of bank cap like we did in the previously certified 2425 budget, which we passed back in April, must remove or request the use of bank cap in the budget. That would make the district go over the 9.9% max if we're to utilize the bank cap. We used $128,536 of bank cap in the original budget. So one of the adjustments I propose is to remove that and use this adjustment and be able to carry the bank cap amount forward to use in a future year. Here is another demonstration of the first state aid cuts since 2017, 2018. 2017, like I mentioned earlier, we made $14,61120 combined state aid and it stood a downward trend ever since then. Every year it's been less and less. Some years, $2 million at a time, some years, a little under $2 million at a time. This year was the best year in a long time, but we only lost $81,000. But still, the cumulative total is pretty staggering if you look at it over the last few years. So getting into the proposed increases and adjustments that we're proposing as part of this just one-time adjustment. The revised 2425 budget proposes a total adjustments of $1,177,708, which would increase the appropriations totally in $1,49,169. The difference between those numbers is the bank cap amount of $128,539 that I mentioned. That's the difference. That number's already baked into the budget. It's just we're hoping to move it to use a different funding source, to use this adjustment rather than the bank cap. The equalization of the $36,692 of state aid that we're getting, that is also part of this. I'm looking to appropriate those funds and we have to accept that tonight at this meeting as well in order to be able to help those funds. The equalization of $1,141,160 would be appropriated through the tax levy adjustment, which would be a net tax increase of $1,012,477. The difference between those two figures, well, is the bank cap number that I alluded to. This would also provide the district flexibility for bank cap usage in the '25, '26 budget cycle, should the board do that when that time comes. The proposed increases that I'm about to explain are predominantly non-personnel expenditures, so they'll not be recurring budget expenses. Once these appropriations are fulfilled, funding can be recurred in future years to address other district needs that we normally would not be able to address under our current situation. So here's a brief summary of what we are proposing for the increases. We currently have a .6 math position that is vacated and we're looking to make that a 1.0, a full-time position. The increase of that position would be the difference in the salary and health benefits that would go with it. Mr. Novak can allude to this when we discuss it later, but I know he has plenty of plays for the math program and this would help gain some more flexibility with the math program to implement the entire program. For Encore, we're proposing that we remove the Title I offset we usually do for our Encore salaries. Our Title I allocation, which you'll see in two slides, has been decreased substantially. So this would be the $140,000 offset that was originally included in the budget and also the flight share of that position. I'm proposing the addition of a .5 social worker for $33,708. That's the .5 salary and also the flight portion. This would allow our district staff... We currently have staff split between Paradigm and Actua. This would allow us to have a full-time person at Actua for our elementary ERI program and also have someone at PK program. $250,000 we're proposing for the middle school math program replacement. It would be the natural progression for the work that's currently being completed. We just implemented the elementary math program. So this would be the logical next step in proposing a new textbook series for the next level up. This is why I propose that we use a state aid funding of $36,000 of state aid that we're offered. So it could partially fund it through the state aid and partially fund it through the tax levy adjustment. One item that's come up pretty prevalently in my operation in finance committee meetings was our maintenance and groundkeeping staff. This past school year, we get rid of it with the township changed a little bit. So our groundkeeping staff is more responsible for upgrading our fields and taking care of it throughout the whole entire athletic season. And they did a phenomenal job, but they were really spread too thin. So I'd love the opportunity to add another groundkeeping staff member and it would also help us so far with our other maintenance and keeping some work that we've done in-house rather than having to contract it out to contractors and other companies. So that $113,000 amount would be the salary, the flight share, the flight debt, and health benefit cost. Related to that as well would be the maintenance vehicles. Our maintenance vehicles, the fleet is aging rapidly. This would allow implementation to allow us to implement a replacement schedule for the vehicles so we can upgrade some now and get a schedule moving forward just so they're not all kind of dying out at one time like they seem to be doing now. We're having a lot of issues with it. Lucky the past couple winters weren't too bad, but even though they haven't been too bad, the trucks are in pretty rough shape. The next item was a $75,000 update of our long-range facilities plan. That's a quote that I got from our architect. The LRFP has to be updated every five years. It was last updated in 2020, so we have to do it either next year or the following year. And I know we've been talking a lot about updating projects and things going on in the district. We have new building grounds supervised for district land. So we really love the opportunity to update this document and upgrade the projects that need to be updated and also update the projects that have been completed. The last couple items here are a deposit to our capital reserve of $200,000. For a district our size, our capital reserve balance is not strong compared to where it could be. This could be an amount that can be in our reserve account where we could offset projects in the future and not have to include them in the budget for taxpayer funding. As short as your reserves are, it makes it a lot easier and you have that money for any problems when something goes wrong. And conversely, we also propose $50,000 to put in our maintenance reserve for required maintenance expenditures. We usually include a deposit in the budget of $150,000 to use the maintenance reserve each budget cycle. So this would partially replenish it and also the other day we had a motion on the agenda for at the end of this school year, once the audit's completed, hopefully deposit funds in the capital reserve for maintenance reserve as well. And the last piece of the adjustments that we're proposing are the reclassifications to bank cap that I mentioned. $128,539, those are items that are already in the current budget. This would just be changing the funding source from using the bank cap to using this tax levy adjustment. The total adjustments for that total, $1,177,700. This is a comparison shown in the budget that was approved back on April 30th. Total budget including special revenue and debt service totals $76,921,215. This new adjustment that includes the increase in the tax levy and state aid totals $77,973,84. The $275,050, that's the math teacher and the textbook series that I alluded to. The $75,000 for general admin, that's the LRFP cost, that's the full amount for that. The operation and maintenance increase is the groundkeeping personnel and also vehicles. $118,732 for benefits and health benefits and the flight debt for those positions that I mentioned. Including the other expenditures is the Encore program, getting rid of that offset with Title I, a social worker by Dr. Russell recommended, and also the deposit to our maintenance reserve. So the net result, as I mentioned, some of those items are covered by the $120,000 bank cap. So the total increase in the budget is $1,049,169. It represents a 1.36% increase. Here is a chart that will show our decreases in Title I and in all of our other grades. As you can see, our allocation for this year for Title I was over $400,000, $424,451. A couple of weeks ago, we got the allocations for all the ESEA entitlement grants and our Title I allocation was cut over $200,000, $231,580. We're only anticipating $192,871. Mr. Novak's office uses Title I funds wisely and for the Encore program, for our summer reading program, and a lot of other things. So this is a really big problem for we're having this much less funding. On top of that, pretty much every single other grant allocation's also been decreased, not as drastically as the Title I, but they've all gone down. Yesterday, we got the IDBA numbers, which is usually special aid to that district tuition that we use for those funds for. That decreased $23,845, we're only getting $888,000 for that. And then included on the bottom, the Art Fest grants are going away at the end of this school year. So we're using some of those funds over this upcoming summer for STEM camp and other things, but those funds are going away. So make sure our allocation for those is zero. So we have well over, almost nearly $2 million left to use those grants that we used this past year. And that's not even the full amount of the total grants, because that grant spanned three years. So total grants, just with these grants, that's going down roughly about 63%. So I feel like it's important to offset some of that loss, especially the Title I loss with some of these other items we're looking to purchase. Here's a chart that shows our fund balance utilization in the budget over the last few years. It's kind of covered around the $3 million mark, between the $2 and $3 million mark. But in '22, '23, we had to use $4 million to balance the budget. And in '23, '24, we had to use over $4 million. For next year, the current budget has proposed $3,123,026 to balance the budget. That's a combination of our excess surplus and also a difference of fund balance that we had to pull from to make the balanced budget. I know we alluded to this chart during the last budget presentation, so I wanted to update it for this one, see with all these changes that we proposed, how it impacted the total percentages. And the answer was 1%. So with all these non-personnel expenditures that we're proposing, it changed the total salaries portion. It was previously 57% of our total budget, now it's 56. The health benefit percentage stayed the same. And everything else portion of our budget, which is the majority of these proposed increases I've shared tonight, it went from being 20% of our total budget to 21% of our budget. So even with another million dollars, it's really only changing our other objects and everything else by 1%. So here is the tax levy impact chart, showing how it will impact residents of West Milford. So compared to 23, '24, the budget that we proposed and adopted back in April, increased taxes, the average assessed home, $187.71, which breaks down to $15.64 monthly. That's what we currently adopted. The revisions I'm proposing tonight would raise taxes in total to $277.56 on an annual basis for the average assessed home, which would break down to $23.13 monthly. And in the last column I showed up there is the change from April to where we are today. So the change from April to now would be $89, nearly $90 for average assessed home, which breaks down to $7.49 monthly. In '23, '24, the increase over the 2% included the healthcare adjustment, which was slashed to last year, $1,478,570. And the total increase was 4.48% for the tax levy. For '24, '25, we adjusted the bank cap number out that was originally included in the budget. We had a healthcare adjustment that we included in April of $562,769. And then tonight, I'm proposing the $1,000,2477 tax levy adjustment that would be included in the total adjustment over 2% of $1,575,246. It's a total general fund tax levy increase of 4.73%, as opposed to the 3.11% that was originally adopted. And overall, including debt service, is a 4.89% tax levy increase when you include debt service. That was previously 3.27%. Here is a chart that shows the trend over the tax levy increase over the last few years, going back 12 years. So we fluctuated and then in '16, '17, and '17, '18, we had a 0% tax increase and broken down so that no taxes were added to our base in those years. And while I write the numbers today, we're going to have it that for '17, '18, it would have been a $1,070,857 addition to the tax base. And then for '18, '19, it would have been a $1,092,273 addition to the tax base. In combination of those two years, there's $2,163,130 that wasn't added in the tax base back in those years, which would be compounded over the years, right, all the other years that preceded it. When you get, last year, as I mentioned, we had the 4.48% increase with the health benefit adjustment. Our original budget was a 3.11% increase. And now with the tax levy adjustment and the additional state aid included in this budget, it's a 4.73% overall tax levy increase proposal. The revised budget calendar. So tonight, we're here presenting the board-proved revised preliminary budget. The easiest way to think about it is we're back in March in the budget program, budget cycle. We previously approved the preliminary budget in March, now we're doing it again back in June. The last day for us to do this meeting is send it down to the county is July 5th. If adopted tonight, I'll get it down to the county tomorrow or Monday as fast as I can so that they can turn it around, do the approvals and their review. Once the county approves it, we advertise the revised preliminary budget. And then our next scheduled board meeting is July 16th, 2024. If the preliminary budget passes tonight, we plan to re-advertise that meeting as a public budget hearing for board adoption of the budget for next school year. The last allowable date for the public budget hearing is July 19th, so we're right against the deadline. But we fit right into the timeframe with our currently planned budget. And then within 48 hours, the budget must be posted to the district website for any resident to view after the public budget hearing, once it's adopted. Yes, as I mentioned, it'll be, once it's submitted by the county superintendent for final reading, it'll be posted to our website. If you have any questions, we have one more day at Dr. Fenari's district and then Dr. Kitchen starts this week. And then I will also be here if anyone has any questions or email contact the patient up there. So if you have any questions, that's the... Thanks.
Bill, I have something I would like to read.
Can we sit down first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Put the lights on.
I'm very concerned about this whole thing. And I've thought about it, I've lost sleep over it, and I've decided to make a statement. "In Thomas Paine's The Crisis," the author writes, "These are the times that try men's souls how appropriate it is to address what's going on in education today. At one time, school districts were autonomous. Now we have mandates, and yet we are expected to pay for those state mandates. In the past years, this governor has directed a formula for state aid that has been inecrable and devastating to so many districts across the state, one of which is ours. This formula has tried our souls as we consciously make budget cuts. Now, like a wolf in sheep's clothing, the state has, quote-unquote, granted some relief for the state aid cuts. Let's be clear, the state is not giving us anything. In reality, it is a loan that must be paid back through an additional tax levy. The decision we make tonight is quite trying. While we could approve this levy, we must consider what it will be of cost to our citizens who already face high mortgage interest rates, high mortgage payments, high property taxes, unexplainable food costs, insurance costs, medical costs, high gas prices, and also loss of income. How much more can our community be burdened with? For these reasons, I urge my colleagues to think carefully about the consequences of an additional tax levy on our already burdened community. I am totally against trying to mend soul any further." I'm done.
Got a couple of questions before we wrap here. Back in the slide where I said the budget comparator, that $275,000 for break-year education?
Yes.
Where is that one? I didn't see the previous one where you said we were expecting the budget.
$275,000, that's a combination of the math teacher and the $250,000 for the math program replacement. The math included in the slide before it, that shows $76,000 for the math position. That includes the salary increase and the health benefit portion of it. So included in the regular education is just the salary portion of it, because the health benefit pieces show in a different line. So it's that and the $250,000 for the math education.
That makes more sense. Then that, one other question. Random $600.
Oh, that's the average assessed home, the adjustment that the township shared. So in '23, '24, the average assessed home is $242,700. The information that the tax collectors often share for 2425 is the average assessed home is $243,300. So it was a change of $600 from last year. You're welcome.
Can you go back to the proposed increase adjustment slide?
Sure.
Thank you. The full-time math position would be what grade?
That would be high school.
And... Dr. Russell, can you explain the social worker position? I heard Mr. Schultz say I'm sure on PK, I'm just unsure.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be glad to. So what we're proposing with this addition is the opportunity to have a part-time social worker be assigned to, hired and assigned to PK while existing social worker that we have in the existing budget can devote her time to the programs we have, not only the school program at Actua, but also the ever-increasing demands of our ERI program. And which, sorry.
So we would have a part-time social worker with the client program at PK?
Part-time social worker for the building program at PK while the social worker that's currently split between PK and Actua can devote her energies to, full energies, to the ERI program
Love.
and the Actua school program.
Amazing. Missing a few things. I mean, that's what we've been talking about in this district for well over 10 years. However, how many elementary schools do we have? Five, right? So it's missing a couple of numbers and a couple more positions because we've talked about having a full-time school counselor or social worker at each elementary school. Now, this would do many, many things for our district. A, it would pull us out of this bullying thing that we keep hearing about because then we would have a full-time person in each building able to do prevention, intervention, and investigations, and have proper training, and train the teachers, and train the students in how to treat one another, the words to use, the words not to use. So personally, I'm glad to see that. Thank you for thinking of it, but it's missing some. So I would love for that to not only just be a full-time position, but I think we need at least two, one, right?
And to clarify, two, for the nature of that position is one of the things that we're seeing in our program at the ERI program at the elementary level and at the ERI program at Highlander Academy and Prep is that the students' needs in these programs really necessitate therapeutic approach that our social workers can provide. And that's really the benefit and the goal for this position is to offset and allow us to be able to devote the resources, personnel, and otherwise, to this program. So I can't speak to what you're describing, but really the intent of it is to really support this. So I can't speak to what you're describing, but really the intent of it is to really support this ERI program, which is really good.
Looking at this part-time position then, if we could skip to the next slide a minute, can you tell me where it fits on this? Because I don't see anything under child study teams. I don't see anything in extra services for special ed. So do that social worker position fall under regular education?
No, it falls under the other expenditures category. Goes by the house cap classified in the budget document.
Okay.
And the other expenditures included in that number, in that $221,000. And to add to what Derek was saying, is I'm sure there's a lot of needs for the district. We try finding a balance when we look at this in between the tax levy and some of the needs to not ask for too much, but find for some response that we can definitely use the money wisely for.
Yeah. Math was never my strength. However, if we were to meet that full-time position, it looks like this budget would need to go up about $120,000, which again, in all of it, would be change. And, you know, I understand, and I heard Terry's speech, and I have to say, I don't disagree. I mean, this is absolutely frustrating. This isn't a gift. But for me, this is an opportunity for me to give, right now it's $10. I'd like to give 20 to make our district a better place, to stay out of lawsuits or newspapers, and to help our kids learn what they need to be the best members of society. You know, and many of the people in our community, hopefully, are getting the tax fees that they need if they are retired, or veterans, or whatever it is. Those are the people that I worry about, but yet their property taxes and their taxes should be the same. So this is for, you know, I understand the frustration, and it isn't fair that the state put us in this position. However, I have to vote yes on this to make our schools the best that they can be. And I think you guys did a great job. However, you know, I always look at everything and see how it can be better. And I think that it is missing some things. So, and especially in the mental health and well-being area, and something, this is a chance that we have to fulfill something that we've talked about in all my, you know, over, I'm gonna say, at least 14 years of my time being, you know, coming to these meetings. It's probably even longer than that. So, you know, I don't know if as a board, if we get to, we probably need to add to it. We probably just get to vote on what's presented. But it would be nice to have a mental health professional in each of our elementary schools full-time, not there two days a week, not there three days a week. It's not fair to our kids. But other than that, I would be voting yes, because our schools need to be the best that they can be. Thank you, Billy.
I'm patient. Thank you.
First of all, what the state did was, instead of them making the decision, they're putting it in the local council. And Terry is right, they're asking us to put it on the backs of our taxpayers, because they didn't, they weren't strong enough to do it themselves. So they're telling us, you've got one shot, you do it. And if you don't, well, you know, it's not on us. So, and I, like Terry, understand that when you're a fixed income, it gets harder and harder for you to keep paying those taxes every month. I think we have to remember what we're doing here tonight is a preliminary, like we always do with the other budget. And I guess it's gonna be up to us in committee to start voicing the concerns, just like you said, Kate, and maybe get some feedback from people, you know, the town people and that, to let us know, are there areas that Billy identified here, and they don't think that that's where to go? I am extremely upset about the title money. That's a 45% decrease in our title money. Money that Encore, that's not special needs. That are, that's the average kid who's just missing it, just missing it. And then we're gonna have to cut that. I can't do that, because every year it keeps pushing people back. And the dollars that we spend today are gonna be twice as much tomorrow, if that's the case. So that's one thing that I, you know, I just can't support. I agree about the social workers. I see the need, I see what's happening in our schools every day. I know that that's our wish list. We can't have, you know, we, not that we can't, but the reality of having one in every building is not a reality. But I understand where you're coming from on that. I totally agree. I don't believe that we should push it to the full amount, because I don't think people can afford that. What I do, what I am concerned about is we got lucky this year. We got good numbers on the state aid cap. Our health benefits were like a gift in itself. We have no idea what next year. I mean, the year before was like a nightmare. So it's like, okay, I'm not gonna give it to you this year, but next year, you know, so we're gonna take it from one and give it to another. I also have watched through the years, every time our budgets have been defeated, that we go back three, we lose three years, and then we gotta catch them back up again. And then our base is cut. And when our base is cut, I never understood the base until I was on the board. And it took me probably five years on the board to understand what the base was. And I feel like sometimes we're talking to the public, and they're hearing these, they're hearing us speak about things that, you know, what are you talking about? Taxes are taxes, and that's what I've always heard. Well, the truth is, if we can at least increase that base by a little bit, we're kind of cushioning ourselves in the event that whatever this formula is that comes down the line, it hurts us again, just like it did before. And we're getting that opportunity. This is a hard decision for everybody. I don't think this is an easy one. I wanna support what's here. I do. And I think that we should vote for a preliminary budget tonight that does. And then we need to hash that out in committee. Only because we're up against a wall, and we can't sit here all night and go back and forth about it. But I think we all see both sides of it. And, you know, the programs that would be, you know, that we could add, you know, the Encore program to me is one of the ones that stand out the most, because we've played games with that program so many times, because that's always that, you know, and Dan has wiggled the money and done what he could to keep, you know, keep the Encore program there, so I'm very supportive of that program. I'm supportive of everything that is on this list. And I probably have a wish list that would add even more. But I think we have to remember too, we can't be personnel. You know, because when you see that, you know, that can get you. Well, I can, but what I'm trying to say is, we can't bank everything on that. I agree with Billy also about the capital reserve, because we don't know what could happen tomorrow. And we keep cutting from those things, and we could be in a devastating situation and not knowing where we're gonna go with that. And, you know, everybody needs a cushion. I know it's a hard vote for everybody. I wanna, I wanna support what you put forth tonight, and I wanna talk more about it in committee to see where it goes. But I think tonight we have to at least move forward so that we can get that preliminary passed. And then you may be in for a horrifying committee than you are here, but I also wanna say thank you for what you put together here, because it kind of gives us a good impression, you know, gives me a good feel of what you're talking about and where the money's gonna go. So thank you.
To add a little bit more to it, with this slide up there, there's also, you know, we're talking about how the state has cut from us, but we also have $159,075 that was cut basically by the town. So that's stuff that we're doing as well, so that's money that the town is still using, that we're not getting, because we have to cover what traditionally, wrong, traditionally, the town has covered, and now they're anticipating us. They take responsibility for fields, and now they're actually asking us to start charging. So that's gonna be in there somewhere. So that $159,000 is a 1, 1.5 person, whether it be Encore, or it be social worker, or my own fields, the STEM and the sciences and things like that, that's a conjunction right there. So I think, against my better judgment, I'm going to, I will support this relatively small amount of increase that we have in comparison to what it could be. But I do wanna thank, not just you, but your family, for what you had to do for this budget. The second budget season that you guys stopped.
Second.
Supposed to be, so.
Like a pod to everyone in my office when they see me about shooting two weeks, or my family.
One wine and beer with flowers.
Yeah.
Billy's wife.
So, wow, excuse me. So really, the only consistency is that the state and federal government give it and take it at will. This is absolutely insane. This is everything that, I mean, to be a part of the lowest tax increase and then the highest tax increase in probably 20, 25 years? Not what I thought was gonna happen. I have points, these are gonna be sort of random, so I apologize for that. I figured I have two more weeks to kind of gather my thoughts together after this preliminary. But as Mr. Schultz mentioned, in order to maintain a healthy fund balance, things like this are necessary. And during the course of our tenures, we've had roof collapses, we've had breaks, we've had random tuitions, not random tuitions, but we've had tuitions show up that are just unbelievable when you see them on paper. So that's what that working capital does, is it supports that and makes sure that we can fill those gaps when they happen. Other districts that don't have that cushion do end up in bad deficits. And at that point, I don't wanna be sitting at this dais, thinking about what we have to do to cover that. We talked about the federal funding decreasing. If you use 2017 and 18 as your baseline year of when S2 cuts started happening, we've only increased the total operating budget on an average of $348,000 a year, which is, what, just enough to cover salary, maybe? Barely? So everything that doesn't go into that 80%, and when that 80% increases, eats away at that 20%, now 21 if we pass this in the long term. And, you know, we sit here as a board, and we say, we want this, we want this, and we want this. We want a new math program, we want a new ELA, we want security vestibles, we want new workers. How does that happen? When that 20% just keeps shrinking, it's impossible. We've been put in this impossible situation where we have lost nine, over $9 million to state aid, and at the end of it, what do I have here? It's our total tax increase since 2017, 18 is $2,438,867. God, that's $7 million that we're trying to figure out what to do in order to achieve these dreams and goals that we have as a board and as a district. I just don't see that happening without these unfortunate circumstances. Good things that we've done in order to manage our district is we've consolidated sports programs, we've decreased our staff size over time due to attrition, and effectively kept good teachers around in order to sustain these programs and ask more of our teachers in order to get it done. We've repurposed Westbrook School by moving sixth graders to Macapin. That was a triumphant moment in my eyes. We can't risk deferring maintenance and capital projects, and that's usually the first thing that gets cut. It's easy to do that. It's an easy deal to say, okay, well, you know, we'll kick this can down the road, we'll let the next one figure it out. But thankfully, we had programs like the ESIT that did a lot to the guts, the things that you don't see on the outside. But things like security vestibles, if we don't sock away things in capital reserve over periods of time, we're not gonna be able to do those things. And if we are gonna do those, that is an extended, you know, to the seven-year timeframe. And at that point, the needs of security are gonna be different. I'm sure, they always change. Back to math and ELA programs, you know, where we want these huge changes, warranted changes, in what the standardized test will reflect, because that's what it comes down to, right? We see the standardized test scores, and they're not, they could be better. And if we do pass this budget, we accelerate the timeframe in which we could roll those things out. And again, like back to the maintenance and capital projects, if we don't do these things in the moment, then all of a sudden, that rollout's gonna take eight years. You're gonna have a child that goes to school and doesn't have these programs that we're trying to roll out, and is left with what we have complained about for years, right? The administration's trying to make these, excuse me, these things happen, but on a shoestring budget. I mean, the best thing that really happened to this school district, you know, don't beat me up for saying this, was COVID. That windfall of federal money, which obviously is eating us a lot now with the record inflation that we have, but if we didn't have that thing, like, could you imagine where we'd be in this moment, trying to figure out what we'd do with this budget and these programs and our teachers? It wouldn't be fair. It really wouldn't be fair to our students had it not been for this awful thing that happened to society. I hate this decision. I hate the fact that this is gonna hugely impact our fixed income community. I hate the fact that this is gonna, our commercial community. Can you imagine what ShopRite is gonna do? Imagine if we went to 10%. I mean, your groceries would never be the same in West Milford, and if we could walk through ShopRite. But I think that supporting this is really going to help stabilize the mess that the state put us in. I hope that come the 16th, that we really have a focus on either approving or disapproving it. But in my estimation, this is the best thing to do for our students. And, you know, it's easy to say, let's do it for the kids this time. I don't think there's a way around it. We have to do it for these students. They deserve the ambitions that the administration has, with the full efforts that hopefully the community supports also. Thank you.
I guess that just leaves me. So this is a very hard decision for me also. We thought we were done, right? We thought we'd pass the budget, we were done, and then we get given this, what they're saying is, you know, one-time shot at reopening the budget and asking our taxpayers and our community to pay more. I agree with the fixed income, I agree with the, you know, our elderly, but I also think about the working families, who, you know, are also seeing costs rising across the board with everything that they're paying. You know, but a lot of those working families, they have children in the schools. So you kind of hope that they see the benefit of what they're going to pay for. But it's hard for them to see the benefit when their, you know, their funds are being depleted more. It's ironic that today, too, in this town, we got our third quarter tax bill with, yeah, with the increase that we just passed. And so now they're gonna get another adjustment with another increase. However, this was a great presentation, Mr. Schultz. And as much as I was on the fence about this, and really was, you know, mulling over this for the past week, everything that you have in here, we need. And we do need more. I agree with you, Ms. Romeo, we do need more. We need a social worker in every building. We need more across the board. But, you know, we've always asked for that, for years. And I know that that's a need that probably will always be asking for. But the Encore, we can't lose Encore. The .6 for the math, we probably need more than .6 for the math. The social worker, yeah, we need more. Putting all the money into the capital reserve and the long-range facility plans, we probably need more for that too. But this, I think, gives us a good base moving forward, and I think it's a good con- And I think it's a good compromise of not doing anything, but not doing the most. Um, I think it's spending the dollars wise and not asking for way more than, um, than maybe our community can, um, afford. Um, I just wish that more community members came out and spoke, uh, 'cause you know we're gonna hear the backlash of this, um, either on Facebook or at Shop Right while we're trying to pay that bill. Um, but no one ever comes to these meetings and speaks to this. And I think that that's where I grapple is, because if you're not gonna come out and speak to it here with us, we're just gonna go on what we, as a board of ed, believe that we need to do. And I, I believe that we do need to do everything that's in here and, um, I am gonna be voting yes for this also. And again, thank you, Mr. Schultz, she did a good presentation. This was very well put together.
Could I make one more, one more comment? Is that okay?
Yes. Ms. Romeo, you can have a little comment.
Uh, Mr. Sitovic brought up test scores and, um, I wasn't even thinking test scores. I was thinking about our goal of wellbeing when I was talking about the social worker. Um, but research from as far back as, I mean, research hasn't changed in that any kid that has a trusted adult in their school building does better on their academics. So I do support new math programs, ones or not, three letters starting with an I, um, and I support new programs and innovative things, but a trusted adult for a child, there's, that's priceless, absolutely priceless. And that's why I will not stop talking about full-time social workers or school counselors. They don't have to be a social worker or a school psychologist. Um, we have districts very close to here that have full-time school counselors in every building and, um, another trustee just said tonight that that's not possible. It is possible. It is doable. Um, and our children deserve that. I will never stop fighting for what our kids deserve in the mental health situation and the things, all of the other things that will align and be better for our district when we provide that are countless. So, um, I would really like to continue this discussion in, um, committee. Thank you. Um, but just, you know, Will saying the test scores, it brought that up in my mind. But the last thing, uh, is a comment Peter made that I didn't even think of, which is a big deal, um, because I think the township is, is at a zero, but yet we, you know, I really like your point on that. I didn't even think of that, um, in that we have now sustained more work this year, right, started this spring, that we've never had to do before, you know? Um, and that costs money, people, time, energy, and machinery. So, um, I'm, I'm glad that you brought that up. Thank you. And, um, yeah, I just wanted to point those things out and I'm excited to talk more about this in committee, but, um, this is, uh, this is not a professional, this stinks, this stinks. And Will, when you said because of COVID, I, I actually fully 100% disagree, because COVID allowed the state to stand behind a lot of money that, you know, all of a sudden there was all this stuff that was free, you know? And, and I know they got federal money and there was, but there's so many things that the state isn't doing for our education system that they could be doing. Um, and I think COVID was a really big thing that they could stand behind and kind of blame it on, you know? So I understand exactly what you're saying in that because of COVID, we saved a lot of money, right? And we were able to cover a lot of things years after, but that was what your point was?
Partially, I mean, they had such a windfall of money, it was ridiculous.
Yeah.
See if the inflation had happened.
Yeah. That was it. I just wanted to like point out some of the really great things that you said.
Anyone else? Okay. So we'll move on to public comments. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first and have to speak in. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Would anyone sign up to speak, Mr. Schultz?
No, there's not.
Would anyone wish, wishing to speak? Okay, Ms. Babcock?
Yeah, I should, right? Thank goodness.
The one person in the audience, well, two.
No.
Right, doesn't normally mean good things.
No.
Caitlin Babcock, 13 post place.
Okay, hi, guys. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody for the hard work that they put in. I really enjoyed the presentation as a math person. I thought it was great. I have all my doodles of fun math going on here. Um, really, what I think is really important, everybody up here in all of your speeches, you were talking about the community, the community, but then not reminding everybody that you're also a part of the community as board members. You all live here, you all pay the same taxes that we pay. Actually, a lot of the administrators sitting at, well, about half of them, sitting at the table also pay the taxes in the town, so I think that's important. Also, you know, talking about, um, people coming today, I was also surprised, I thought, I got here like a couple of minutes late, I thought I was gonna pull in and wasn't gonna be able to find a spot. I was very surprised. But, you know, in the past, if you had been talking about the budget, maybe talking about cutting band, sports, anything like that, I think we would have had something incredibly different, but doing something like this might prevent that in the future, which I think is important. And also, um, talking about the students and the programs, um, lots of times, parents come up here and you hear them talking about the programs that affect two very different ends of the spectrum. You know, we talk about our high highs and we talk about our low lows, but really, doing this type of thing really protects those kids in the middle, those in education, what we call the bubble kids, something like an encore program, right, where you're looking at the kids who are just almost there. Sometimes I call them the forgotten kids, right, 'cause those are the kids that, you know, they're doing okay, so lots of times, they're easily pushed over to the side, but this is something that could easily, um, really kind of help them out, really make sure that we're giving them those programs with Encore, Resource Room, all of those great things. Um, you know, as a taxpayer in the town, I think we pay taxes to do a lot of things. Um, I don't think we'll ever regret paying for education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Babcock. Anyone else wishing to speak? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any changes to the agenda? Okay, you have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Personnel, Student Affairs, Mrs. Van Dyke.
I'd like to move item one under Personnel, Student Affairs.
Second.
Any discussion? See in non-roll call, please.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Sitovic? Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Okay, Operations and Finance, Mr. Lippi.
I would like to move number one for, I, number one.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? We've had enough? Had enough discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Lippi?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
No.
Mr. Sitovic?
Yes.
Mrs. Lockwood?
Yes.
Public comment? Do I have to say hello to someone?
So, are you doing business or over business on here?
No, but I am planning on saying hello. Thank you to someone. We don't make public comments. Uh, did you wanna? Yeah, I will read that. Hold on, I will read it for you. So, public comments. All speakers will have five minutes to speak until a period of 30 minutes transpires. Before speaking, please state your name, group affiliation, and address for the record. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. After speaking, all speakers are asked to sign the register provided and give their full name, group affiliation, and their address. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are expected to have read the statement within the agenda regarding the regulations concerning public comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak?
Kate Romeo, One Crestville Drive. Um, there's recently a newspaper article about, um, and it's a, it was mostly Sussex County administrators that were interviewed, discussion of student debt, student debt and walking at graduation, student debt and receiving their diploma. As a parent of West Milford student this year, um, my own child was threatened with not walking, um, because honestly, he only had $3 in his lunch account. Um, I have multiple, I think there's actually six emails that came from a school principal that feel in a threatening manner. Um, as a community member, I don't want a threatening manner email from any principal or from any school administrator stating that if your school lunches aren't paid, if your school debt is this, you can't go to the dance that you might have or might not have been able to pay for, or if your school lunch account is in the minus, you cannot walk at promotion or graduation. Um, as a parent, I'm offended, appalled, upset. The newspaper article was very interesting in, um, questioning administrators of close by county, I mean, Werpe State County, but Sussex County, we are more like a lot of Sussex County schools, in asking them what they do in this manner. Um, and I just want to ask the board as a whole to please look into this, to discuss it with administration, to talk about better ways to communicate, um, to know what is, I mean, I know that we talk, I'm talking as a parent, so I know the board talks about student lunch debt and student debt. Um, I, it's just upsetting that that goes out to a community at large. And this is not just the West Milford problem, hence the newspaper article, is that it is a problem everywhere and everyone deals with it in a different way. And I even suspect that maybe every school in a district might deal with it a different way. Um, so it's just something that I wanted to bring up, um, in that I don't think every principal or every, you know, this wasn't a lunch issue, it was a, you know, school debt issue, and I don't think every principal or all of administration is doing the same things, you know? So it's just something I wanted to bring to your attention that, um, I was upset about and that needs to be discussed. So, thank you for listening. And when and if I find, I had the newspaper article, uh, and I, I just tried to Google it, I can't find it right now, but it's from, it's from this past week, and if you want to see it, I can send it to you. Thank you. Oh, I don't get the messenger?
I, I get it.
Um, I live in the, oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Romeo. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, see in non, can I have a motion to close public? Thank you, Peter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so there's no need for an executive session tonight, right? Um, but before we adjourn, because I didn't have a president's report today, I just wanted to take this time to thank Dr. Fanari. Um, this will be her last board meeting in West Milford. Her last day is officially tomorrow. Dr. Kitchen will be taking over on Monday, um, but I just wanted to thank you for, um, everything that you have done this past year. Um, you, you came into a situation where we're kind of in a, in some flux and I really believe that you are leaving this district in a better place, um, or stronger place, not a better place, a stronger place than, than where it was when you came. You've brought back a lot of, uh, the things that I think went to the wayside because of COVID. We, I know, we don't like to blame COVID, but, um, I do believe that a lot of things just changed during then. Um, you brought back cabinet meetings, um, for your administrators, the, the weekly ones, the monthly ones, um, you were very visible in the community, you were supportive of the board, um, with your weekly confidential updates, um, you were always available to us. Um, and I just, I, I always remember, I think you said, um, I, I don't know how I brought it up with you, but I always remember you saying words to the effect of, I'm not an interim, all I know how to do is be a superintendent. So I look at this position as not being an interim, but being a superintendent, and, and we have definitely flourished with you here the past year and you will be missed. I wish you luck, um, in your retirement, as Will said the other day, which really is, like, 'cause I know you're going on to another district pretty soon. I don't really think you're really taking a break, but, um, you know, I think that district's going to be pleasantly surprised with the superintendent that they get the interim. So thank you so much, Dr. Fanari, and I hope you stay in touch and wish you the best for the future.
I want to thank you for stepping in as you did, and you truly did step into many issues that we had, and you handled each one with grace, and I want to thank you very much for handling that. I also want to say it was a pleasure to get to know you, um, and develop a friendship, and hopefully in the future, we will still see each other. Um, our district is in a much better place than it was when you got here. I'm looking forward to Dr. Kitchen. I think we're, we're move, turning pages, and I think our team is developing here and things will be moving on, and I think we're all be stronger as the, the days move ahead. I'm very optimistic about our future here. Things are well, and hopefully we are moving into a direction where they are much better. So thank you for giving your time and your, and your compassion to our district and the love that you shared with us of many things. So thank you for being here, Dr.
We'll be here on Tuesdays. You can come on by. If you're gonna miss, I know me, you're gonna miss me, I, I, I understand. She, yes, and, you know, and she misses my, my strange questions from the private sector, and I appreciate that, but I, I do appreciate more your patience and your guidance, um, in this process, for those of us that were relatively new on the board when you came on board. And for some of the things we've gone through, which I'm sure other districts are similar, more things are different than more things are the same, um, but, but thank you very much, and, well, Godspeed.
Kitchen.
You know, I probably should have said during public comment, but I should have more known how helpful, um, Dr. Fanari's been to me as well, uh, in just making the transition here, so she could, she's communicated tremendously well with me, so I want to thank you personally for, for your help. Well, I'm lucky, she's stepping through the kitchen, so she won't come stepping out of, so. I'm sure, I'm sure we'll still be in touch with the questions for one of them, but thank you.
I also want to say, Dr. Kitchen, that you have given a lot of your time transitioning into this district too.
Much I wanted to.
And we thank you for that.
Thank you, Lydia, for all you've done. I appreciate it, I respect you. You're an academician, which is a pleasure. Thank you. Thank you.
Ditto. I feel like you were a light in the journey, although I know I was a thorn in the side many times, but I just want to thank you for always listening. And I've said this to you personally, and I will say it now publicly, I have many years in education, and I have never, ever seen an interim like you, Lydia. Someone who cares and actually comes in and really does the job with very small and graceful, humble demands, like you have none, and, and you just, you know, you're amazing, and good luck in all of your future. It's been nice getting to know you and working with you. Thank you.
See and non?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Before, before can I, I just wanted to make. I should have made a public comment before on this, but as a board and as educators, we've seen a rash of drownings over the last few weeks, because it was warm. The weather got very warm, the water was still very cold, and I'm sure there's other aspects in that, we just unfortunately had the loss of the reservoir. But if people are listening to us, we're a district that has lakes every 50 feet. Please be careful. Please watch yourselves. Please buddy it. Please, pools and lakes are different. That's, I just wanted to put that out there. Maybe something, one person will listen, and that'll do it. So I just wanted to, sorry, didn't mean to bring the, Dr. Fanari's retirement.
No, it's a good point, though, for sure, because even the strongest of swimmers can get into trouble out there.
Okay, just before we adjourn, I just, I just, before I go, I just want to say thank you so much to this board. We had some lively discussions, and we had some very, very interesting times when we may have been this far apart, and yet we ended together. And so, you know, that doesn't always happen. As you know, I've been in a number of places, and I've worked with a number of boards, and, you know, keep striving for that, that coming together part, because that's what helps our students and our community. I do want to say a heartfelt thank you to the administrative team in this district. You have probably got one of the most stellar administrative teams I have ever worked with. They're amazing. They collaborate. They want to work together. They genuinely like to work together, which doesn't always happen. And in particular, the gentlemen that are sitting to my left, we have had ups, downs, inside-out conversations, how do we fix this? What do we do? And at no time did any of them say, we can't do that. They say, how do we do that? And we, we really, every Wednesday, our meetings last for hours, because we're really trying to do what's best for the West Milford public schools. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you. I really have appreciated my time here, and I really truly appreciate your collaboration and the ability to work with administrators and staff who are just really genuinely love kids and want to be, you know, the best they can be. So thank you.
Okay. Okay, Will, go for it.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? And the time is 8:18.